These meetings do need to be recorded. You could just leave the.
Yeah.
You could rename yourself or just stay like that, but. My.
What the training sounds like. Yeah, it's inside one segment of its field and. But like if it clearly just sorry. Logic of essence is probably. Modern neural network style training models. Be based on the last, you know, train bringing up its which segments are interesting. Virtual lines or something. It's a loud voice. So. So there were two votes. Yeah, it's the same. It's like. Yeah, there's two joint parcels of their building base there. Yeah. It's me. I was surprised they didn't want to build something. But. No, it seems like it'd be more. It's just a super valuable building. It's two single family. We have one eighty years. So it is like it's four units total. Okay, but you could do like eight. Yeah, it is art here, so I think you can do. So they're trying to scare people. Our means is sunset district. All. And build units as. So the only place where that seriously happened so far. It's an amount of feel like they like there. There are forces that will be, they will probably lose. The proposal is like. That is eating one pie as much as they as they build. We are technically subject to building. Like if I'm. For at least. Yeah. You're on. No. Yeah, there's like. Feel like I will. All the. They ditch. They are looking. The long rest. Yeah, yeah, for that we're saying again. During the negotiation. Yes.
Okay, can I start or? All right, welcome to the fire commission, everybody. Thank you for attending. This is our third in-person meeting since the. Covid Zoom era. Please know we want to hear from you whether you're in the physical audience or on Zoom. Which we are still maintaining. If you're in the audience, you can fill out a speaker card. Bring it to the planning staff over here. And they will give you a speaking slot. If you're on Zoom, you can press star nine. If you're on the phone, sorry, you can press star nine or on Zoom, you can use the raise your hand feature and it will be given time to speak. When it is your turn to speak with the planning staff, call your name. And if you're on Zoom or telephone, they will mute you. Give you three minutes to speak. Please note that anyone in attendance may only speak once per general. Okay, let's go to roll off. Here.
Here.
Commissioner being sorry.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kim.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Great, thank you. Next, we have the pledge allegiance. Please rise.
Right. I'm by the leisure. Isn't it? From which it says.
For the eighteen meeting. Does anyone? Things seem like they will improve.
Sir Matty.
All right.
I say you're out now.
All right.
Commissioner, we are sorry.
Bye.
Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson.
I'm staying in.
Commissioner.
Hi.
Evan, any favor? Thanks. There, there was one open at that.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we're on item number five on the agenda, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. If you have any comments, would like to speak or anything not on the agenda, please let stop now, raise your hand. Okay, great. Next is item six announcements of conflicts of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest with the any commissioners on any items?
There should be.
Okay, so for agenda items seven C and seven D.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Visit the exposure on the same items. The architect and I are personal friends. We belong to the St. Ernest's Club. We don't have any financial ties otherwise. Innovation or.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, so moving on to the first public hearing, which is item. Seven A or four, 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 San Mateo Avenue. Request for additional use permit to allow private community facility to operate that existing second floor space. At four, four B San Mateo Avenue pursuant to second twelve point two eight zero and zero two. Zero may be San Bruno Municipal Code, Civic Star, P U I is the advocate, both family partnership is the owner. U P twenty three zero zero three is permanent. This project has been determined to be category exempt. On the act sequel guidelines class one. Section fifteen three oh one exist facilities. Michael, we have a.
Yeah. I'll just make it quick. As the. My commission knows we had with the side of these reporting before. Some discussions about the upstairs minute at the staircase is that we're going to be coming to the lower. All we need is a other month. I will be conditioned. Our reservation to the hall of parties and get definitive. Direction from the. If they want, I'm going to see when we send to the upstairs.
Okay, great, so. No presentation. Going to be happening tonight. No presentation.
I would like to move that we continue this item of the June twenty eighth meeting. Second.
Okay, we have a second. I think, I think. Uh. To be, if anyone would like to speak on this product, well, he doesn't appear to be sure. But does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Indication only to continue me after the next meeting. Okay, let's take about that. Good appreciation. Does anyone? Everyone okay with the? Yeah, okay, so all. All in favor, we have no objections to continuing the site for next. All right, the next item is seven B four seventy seven two avenue. Request for additional use permit to allow. Central Business District pursuant to section twelve point two eight zero point zero two zero San Bruno Municipal Code. Calendar associates, designer applicant, and the city of San Bruno is the owner. He's permanent twenty three dash zero zero five. Recommended environmental determination and categorically exempt pursuant. Categorical exemption pursuant to class one section fifteen three oh four A through C minor alterations to land. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, I will say well, my own will give you that staff presentation.
I'm so over.
Good evening. Pleasure to be before you. So I will be presenting on four seventy San Mateo Avenue, also in at Centennial Plaza. And first I'll cover the agenda for this presentation. We start the experiment request. Then move on to background where I will discuss particle history. Then I will move on to existing conditions, the proposed conditions of the park. Then the staff analysis and finally I'll conclude with the recommendation. So. The subject site is four seventy San Mateo Avenue, use permit U P two three dot oh oh five. Also Centennial Plaza, and this is a request for a conditional use permit. To allow public park of the central business district pursuant to section twelve two eight. Point point of the San Bruno Municipal Code. And as was mentioned, Cali, Cali's associate to the designer where this proposal and the city of San Bruno is the owner part. Though some background and partial history. On four seventy then it tell. The parcel at four seventy San Mateo Avenue in San Bruno. Has been a commercial land use for bank and other home net couses throughout the twentieth century. It first started off. As an under press company. This lasted up until nineteen sixty. And then in nineteen sixty to nineteen ninety, it was occupied by well, Artel Banker. In nineteen ninety six, the city of San Bruno initiated a purchase for the art company. And it completed this purchase and sell in the year two thousand two. After two thousand two, the city of San Bruno submitted a demolition permit and it demolished previous site. And it converted it into an info lot and made some minimal improvements to the subject site. Through two thousand nine. Twenty thirteen and twenty nineteen, the city of San Bruno adopted a series of plans. First started off with the San Bruno General Plan, which addressed some policies involved for Centennial Plaza, hoping to revitalize it in future. That way it could promote pedestrian activity in the central business district. The transit corridor area plan also address these bull and policies for Centennial Plaza. As well as the conceptual San Mateo Avenue Street State Plan. That was adopted in twenty nineteen. And then. In twenty twenty one, the municipal code was amended. The reason why it was amended is because. The previous municipal code did not allow for public uses to operate in this site. It only focus on land uses enclosed in space. So. The twenty twenty one code amendment allowed public clauses and recreational facilities to be traditionally permitted in the central business district. And then in twenty twenty two, the city council approved the design that was submitted by a city council subcommittee. And it approved the design and budget to present what you're going to see today. And it is enforcing the TCP vision, which is to be revitalized the site. So now I will cover the existing condition of four seventy San Mateo Avenue. I will also address the site plans and amenities that are currently available at this site. So it is located in the central business district at the intersection of Genevieve Avenue and San Mateo Avenue. And since in the central business district, it means it's surrounded by a variety of commercial land uses. That vary from retail store, banks, restaurants. And also residential uses since the Archie District is located on Mystic Avenue, but also on streets. Like Sylvan and. All the other groups around that area. So these are some of the surrounding land uses that you see today. To the left, we have the commercial uses as well to the right. We like West Coast Cafe, Thai restaurant, new shop door. Behind the subject lot, you have three residential homes. And then behind the subject lot, you have a city parking lot. This slide here also shows some others surrounding land uses. Across the street, you have Bank of America, City Bank. Down the street on Avenue, you have a hotel. And the last photo there is an additional photo of. The city parking lot that is behind the subject site. So the subject lot is six thousand five hundred square feet. And the current conditions are largely composed of impervious and pervious surface. So what this means is impervious surfaces refers to surfaces that do not allow water to penetrate. Or infiltrate into the ground. So these typically include like concrete, asphalt and rooftops. Rainwater or runoff cannot be absorbed in these surfaces. On the other hand, pervious surfaces prefer to surfaces that do allow water to infiltrate the ground. This includes pervious surfaces like gravel, vegetated areas and permeable papers. So the existing site currently has three thousand one hundred seventy square feet of impervious area. And five thousand seven hundred eighty square feet of pervious area. The subject lot is A P N zero twenty three. Six three and one six. This is. What is included in the calculations and the current block. What you see in gray is. Public right away. So you have a passageway that goes into the subject block and then you kind of San Mateo Avenue and sidewalk. So these are the existing amenities that are included in the current Centennial Plaza that I can see today. It has minimal landscaping, two seating benches, five large artwork pieces. It includes the San Bruno Time Capsule that was. Placed into the ground in twenty fourteen and it also has a passageway to the city parking lot as I mentioned before. Now, Centennial Plaza is currently not accessible to the public since it is barricaded roads due to the subsurface rubble from demolition that occurred. Two thousand two. And this slide here shows the existing conditions of amenities. You see the time capsule, a patient, a passageway, the five art pieces. The minimal bench seating area. We could also see the barricaded road as well. And there's a sign that clearly tells the public, keep out, do not trespass into this area. So looking at the proposed project, I will show you guys the site plan, renderings and amenities that are so for this new plot of grades. So while the subject lot measures five thousand five hundred square feet, the improvements will actually extend into the public right away. This will include the sidewalk gold out area on San Mateo Avenue and it will also include park for twenty. Three, six, three. One hundred, which is owned by the city of San Bruno. And this is a passageway that goes into the city parking lot. So it will include the previous A P N number I mentioned. The passageway into the city parking lot in the fold out. The proposed conditions for this subject site will include. Three thousand two hundred seventy five square feet of impervious area and five thousand. Four hundred sixty square feet of purpose there. Now, these are the proposed renderings of what this site could potentially look like. The project's objective is to activate activate the site by creating an urban plaza. Establishing a vibrant central community gathering location that serves for a resting area for pedestrians, commuters. And shoppers navigating through the central business district. This is another rendering calendar. So it has provided the city of San Bruno and. This space will allow for programmed events that could attract the people to our downtown area. Now, this slide here covers the proposed amenities that will be included in the proposed plot that. Several amenities will provide a welcoming atmosphere to the space for local gatherings such as a performance stage in the shelter. A flexible plaza space that could be used for outdoor dining and also public events. It will have a passive gathering space for the rear. Concrete walkways, decomposed granite, a variety of light fixtures that we will cover soon. Bright seating options, a bike rack. A trap receptacle, a bottle filler and a relocated San Bruno Time Capsule. The area will also include planting areas that will have a bright trees, shrubs and bio retention plants. Now, there are a few amenities that are still to be determined. Staff that includes planning, building, public works, police and community service gathered to assess the thirty five percent supplemental package level. Admitted to the city of San Bruno and we determine that in the building permit phase. We will look more closely into lighting, firm water treatment, furnishing and pervious pages. But let's look at lighting first. These are the lighting pictures that you currently see in the material board that is included in attachment four. It will offer stage lighting, area light fixtures and best in lighter. Police determine that. Police determine that. The plaza show ensure safety and visibility in the plaza. And although the current plans do show the location of vesting lighting or stage lighting, if it's not shown, the location of the light fixtures. So it determines that later in the development process. There will be a submittal of a lighting plant. That meets the IES standards and the CPDED guidelines as well. So in this plan, it will locate the fixtures. And building and police department will review the plan to ensure it meets these guidelines and standard. The second thing that will be determined later in the development process will be storm water treatment. Public Works wants to ensure the proposed plaza meets and complies with the San Bruno membership charter plan. And it will also meet the storm water C three requirements and adhere to the city standards. So in the development process, they will also be reviewing future plans such as the ninety five percent supplemental plans to make sure it meets the standard. The third thing that is yet to be determined is the furnishing in the proposed plaza space. A community service department and staff select a durable, long lasting furniture. It will also look for options that could be fixed into the ground, but also removable for those. Public events and public gatherings that take place such as farmers markets or concerts. Or dance performances. As was mentioned, this is aiming to be a flexible base, so we do want to have the option that allows. Fixed and removable. And we will take into consideration death, maintenance and extended use by. The last thing that has yet to be determined is the selection of pavers. The project seeks to select favors that promise durability, longevity, all suitable for public events or performances. This proposed plaza could bring trucks that come into the site. Looking to that for us, so we want to make sure that these pavers are going to stand that way. And the planning and security service department will score these options there, so and topics as well. So staff's analysis and use permit fine. We find that it will not be detrimental to the health, safety, comfort of the general public. Because it will enhance the quality of life residence while also contributing to the overall positive image to the city. The public plaza will be accessible, safe and well maintained area for communities to gather and enjoy. The second finding that we have is it will not be dangerous or detrimental property in the neighborhood. Since the proposed Centennial Plaza project will operate as a lively event space. And will fulfill the community's request for the community engagement process. Earlier in the presentation, I mentioned that in twenty nineteen, it was a street state plan that was adopted during that process. Staff went out to the community, tried getting their feedback. The community emphasized that they wanted to make this a lively event space that was flexible for many. Performance uses and gathering needs as well. So we find that the proposed project meets their requests. And the third thing is in policy, OSR tactics of chapter five. San Bruno General Plan, it states that the city aims to provide small public parks, plazas within the downtown area. Centennial Plaza as proposed will move this goal. And it will do so by providing amenities such as venture seating areas, water fountain and lots of vegetation as well. Overall, this will serve as a resting area for pedestrians, shoppers that do filter through. San Mateo Avenue and the central business district. So staff's recommendation is to approve use permit UP twenty three down zero five. Based on five in one degree and conditions of approval one through twenty three differ from attachment one. And the next step is you guys are the final approval body for this project permit. And if approved, there will be a ten day appeal period that follows today's date. And that is it for my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions as well as our managers, Michael Lottland, Tim Wallace and Damien are the community services. I think they're online, but they are also here to answer any questions regarding community services. And that that will take place at the proposed plaza. And I also am crying with calendar associates is on the Zoom meeting as well. If you guys want to get any questions related to the architectural plan set that was submitted to you guys.
Thank you for your presentation. I had just a few questions. Wanted to know if there's been any consideration or discussion to any portal vendors. Pretend it was beyond there or maybe not committed. You've been to that, you know, proper refreshments now. Sort of the content in the park type of thing, you know, that the public will be the content in the park, but wanted to that especially. And it's your capacity for that area. And yeah, and it's got a non-rack city, where your blankets when you're out is good. Weather is great, it's very, it's very joyy environment. And are people committed to eat, drink, have alcohol? Have a cocktail of beer. And Rotary that's been a two or four years ago and corner right from the bank, which is to start. And I'm wondering, there's been a discussion with the Rotary Club to see if there's a. Any thoughts about this block, now that it needs to be moved in the justice. But the dawn out there, it is the ticket box, so. Do you have any comments on this question?
The, I could address the sitting on floor question. The project does propose some piece, decomposed granite and rubber surfacing quartz the rear of the block. That could be potentially for. I'm not sure if community services has had communication with. Those property street if standing up. Could we answer that question? And could you please remind me your.
Having any outside vendors on the premise, I just, entertainment, but vendors that food and store.
In terms of vendors, those who are also, they will need to communicate with the community service department. They will be allowed on. In the package that does address that. And in terms of capacity, the this is the thirty five percent single for the project. The posted on the plan, so I think it might be the only non whole day figure. That could be something to give your best for interest at the ninety five.
I do see that when there, when there are vet people and use is good, weather is good, it's approximately there. Every component is just, everything is aligned, right? It's people are willing. To sort of squeeze in, now I don't know whether it's helpful. But I think that would be interesting to hear, if there's a discussion. The thought is here, so thank you, Brad.
Very mysterious because the rendering shows the current change on that wall. Do we have some kind of easement or control what's on that wall? It seems like part of the adjacent building.
Are you referring to the five large pieces?
Yeah, currently, currently that's like all. So it's shown in the rendering, like a new rainbow arrow. On the right side of that.
Out area on sidewalk. These are renderings, these are now the final sure design.
It seemed like the current public art there was unclear like whether it belongs to the city or not.
It's not on the ball.
It would not be ideal if you get rid of this public art just up there, basically. That would not be, that would not be as.
So in relation to that. Is there any talk of what's gonna happen with that artwork? Has there been any discussion about what?
So when it comes to the renovations of the site, they will be, because that area will become. A planting area now. The site does aim to promote the community and gathering space as well. With the community service department or options to. Art that could be so tight, that will be discussed later.
I guess, I guess the thought was maybe we should give it a more spot. But I think it might. That people something to preserve it.
So I'm gonna state what I think is going on and help me clarify. So this, this new park that being let, aren't wrecked commission. I think it came in a year ago or longer, they start spearheading it. Currently, this is not a park. Like it's, it's not zoned, it's just a lot and doing what we want to. They raise some money and now all you're asking them for from us is to allow it to be helpful part. But we're not looking at the design, is that correct? Yes, we're not approving the design, we're, we're just saying that, okay, this, this site can be used as a park. Is that what you have to look right now?
Yes, that's correct, so. The current land use designation for our both is financial. And see previously obtained. And once the city of San Bruno purchased the. The San Bruno municipal code designated as a designated public space. So that's what we're presenting. In the day is to approve this naming conversion. That way, the city of San Bruno Community Service Department can actually revitalize the location and make it. What you see today, which is based of many possibilities. Basically artwork, gathering spaces for the community, for investors. Performers within the park community. So the first step in this process is going through the planning commissions and hopefully getting. A public plaza.
Okay, can this be coming back for us when there is a fuller sense of that you mentioned, like a ninety five percent plan? So if ninety, if our legal allows the land to be public plaza or. But we'll find plans once the architects and manager decisions and materials that selected that coming back to us.
You know, the way that the process is structured, the city council will be. I believe having a study session on the final plans before they go out to bid. To a, to a contractor, we can come back to the informational item. You know, to, to show you the final choices. It's just the, I'm a little bit of a process is that the, the design has already been through a sub, a subcommittee. Choosing what the uses are gonna be in the plaza. So, you know, the design calendar and associates is a consultant to the city. And so they've given a very specific and limited task to. The machines and so the, the plans for the plaza, the state of the entire budget, so. That's what they're, that's what they're. I think a lot of my questions were answered. I know we're not. It sounds like we have a commissioner, somebody from the city's end that is approving or. You know, just decide decisions on aesthetics, et cetera. Who would that be?
The community service department taking charge and where to be. The consultant calendar associates. Proposed public property. So.
Great, okay. And since it doesn't sound like it will be coming back to us for actual review of the actual design. Perhaps just an information on the owl. Some of these things could be addressed, I just want to put on the record that we have good lighting. First, we find the downtown area. In the renderings on the stage, given, I performed a part before the musician. Should redesign that canopy to get rid of the call on the front and just have the back. I hope that there's enough power for holding events like musicians, vendors, other things. All that's taken into account, we need infrastructure design. There's provisions to minimize loitering and homeless when it is not used by the public. Call that there's public restaurants for events, but. Should consider or at least nearby. That's all I.
Just the last question, I, I understand it's not coming back to the planning commission, but. Good question for raised about the artwork that's currently there and yard that portraying the image. There's a lot of consideration of the kind of parking considerations that need to happen, given the large vehicles entering the space. Parking in front of it. I understand it's not coming back to planning, but how come there's no conversation with arts and culture or traffic and safety? Are any of those committees going to be engaged in this process at all besides that?
Yeah, not that I'm aware. I heard the, the way, the genesis of this was a, a city council subcommittee. Representative metrics for that, that was. And they, you know, structured the. The review of the plaza.
I, I almost feel like there should be some urgent speaking conversation, that's what those committees for. Right, I just feel like there should be some consideration, particularly about the artwork. I know I make friends and I appreciate what's there, but there have to be some effects here, stuff that's there already. And then even with the parking, music can be a red zone, it's gonna be a voting zone, what's gonna impact there? I, I almost feel that that would be a wise thing to do, but I hear staying, I just wanna know.
Question, is there an opportunity to have it come back to us where we can make comments on kind of architectural, given this public project?
You, well, we're, we're definitely made wonderful comments that you made and. Made wonderful comments that you made and from the past, all of them long and. It's part of the process. And then a promise. You're still. Given the tight time frame. Planning to. Uh. Be. You know, that the, that the plans completed and, and just within a couple of months, say back to the. To the, the our city council.
Okay, uh. Then I'm. Okay, uh. You said the artifact is on, uh, on Zoom, uh. Do they have any further comments they'd like to add?
Um, yes, this is Brian Fletcher with Calendar Associates Landscape Architects, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic, I, um, I've been feverishly taking notes here of all the comments, unfortunately, the audio has been a little bit choppy, but. Um, maybe I can, uh, shed a little bit of light on, on a few things, first off, the art component, the existing art that's out there. Um, has been weathered and has been deteriorated in the sun. Um, I know, um, Anne Matola, the previous, um. Uh, Parks and Rec Director, um, had been in touch with the artist and made contact and, and they're amenable to. At least those being removed, um, if those, those are chosen. I think as, um, the city already mentioned, there is going to be a planting area along there. Um, we could work around those, but because they're in a state of deterioration, we are proposing for them to be removed. Um, the art, that's the, the wall on the art that's being proposed would be something that should. Um, and we recommend going through the Arts Commission for, uh. Um, coordinating of, of what would go back in place of, um, the art if it was removed. Um, I believe there was a question regarding parking and red zones. Um. And, and whether that would block. Um, the plaza itself. Um, along San Mateo Avenue, there's actually a bold out existing, so there is no parking in front of the plaza, you know, along San Mateo Avenue. And in the backside of the parking lot, again, there is no, no parking directly in front of, um, the plaza entrance. We've maintained a, um, drive lane. So that maintenance crews can access the park via removable bollards. Up the pathway can ma- do maintenance within the plaza, set up stages. Uh, for the larger events and such, and be able to go back and then, um, protect the plaza via ball, bollards again. Um. And then the other comments that I heard, good lighting, absolutely, no front columns of, of the canopy on the stage, we certainly can look at that. Uh, we are certainly making sure that there's enough power and dedicated power for, um, for events and for concerts. Um, and then are continuing to look at the furniture, not only for aesthetics, but also for, um, detracting from the unhoused use. Um. And then there's, there's ample places, the parking lot, and, and I know even on. Um, the city event on San Mateo Avenue, that, that restrooms were brought in, portable restrooms were brought in for larger events. I, I think that's what I heard for, for most of the comments, please let me know if there's anything else I can answer and, and certainly appreciate the time, uh, coming before you tonight.
Great, thank you, uh. Any questions? No, okay, uh, do we have, um, any comments from the public on the side? Thank you.
I'm. Right on. Well. Nick, I'm giving you permission to speak, you will have three minutes or any whenever you're ready.
Hi, thank you, can everyone hear me? So, uh, my first question, uh, was regarding, uh, the, uh, vegetation, I've seen that there was. Um, I think pretty much all the trees are not native to California, is there any way to make sure all the vegetation is native? To the area, at least to California? And then I was wondering, is there a chance to increase the, um, area that is, uh, pervious to rainwater? We do have a lot of great infrastructure in the area, so I think that would be really nice. And then also, uh, with the light fixtures, is they, are they going to be, uh, receded or fully shielded to try to, you know, um? Kind of stop, uh. The, um. Stop bothering wildlife, uh, a lot of birds and stuff kind of migrate through the area, just wondering if that's a possibility to have, uh. Shielded light fixtures? And as far as, um. Detering that, uh, unhoused population, um, I believe having a house and shelter is a human right. Um, so building these, um. Kind of areas that will. Shun, uh, people from sleeping on park benches or stuff like that should not be allowed. If there's a problem with the unhoused population, that should be addressed somewhere else, we should not make it harder for them to find an area to relax and find a place to sleep. Um, but thank you for letting me make my comments and I hope to hear back from some responses. And if the responses could please speak into the microphone, um, like it was stated, it's pretty hard to hear on Zoom the responses.
Okay, thank you for your contributions. We have others here.
Thank you, I certainly can speak to a, a few of those. Um, first off, regarding the shielding of, of the lighting, yes, absolutely, the light fixtures that, that are currently in discussion, um, have. Um, they do not shine light up like old fixtures would, acorn fixtures and such, they only direct light down. And then on top of that, they have additional shielding within them to direct light. Um, specifically to the area that it's needed and shield it from adjacent homes and or other businesses and such, so, um. We certainly are going to select those stormwater treatment, I believe as city staff mentioned, we are going to be. Um, incorporating, um, stormwater treatment to meet current codes. Um, to treat the stormwater before it goes into the storm drain system. Regarding, uh, the use of natives, we certainly use natives whenever possible, however, we also need to balance, um, growth form. Um, the type of tree, whether it's evergreen or, um. Also a good canopy, a well behaved tree for a streetscape environment, so. The trees that we did select, um, currently right now meet the water requirements, the low water requirements, as well as being very behaved within an urban environment. And will not uplift, um, pavement as other trees would, so it's always a careful balancing act between. Um, choosing natives, but also drought tolerant and also well behaved in an urban environment.
Great, thank you. So. Yeah. There's on the side. We have any, uh. I guess we'll close out with comment then on the side. And. Any further question or comment you can make before we. Hey, does anyone like to? Put a motion for? Um, this is the last comment, I know we're still working through a lot of the details, but as somebody who's really invested in downtown, I'm excited by this. Um, excited by the possibility, it's been a long time coming, uh, so I'm going to move to. That's it. Why? Based on what people are reading. One, two, three, second. Thank you, uh, can we have a roll?
I'm ready.
Hi.
Vice Chair Gerardo.
Hi.
Commissioner Beal, coming.
Hi.
Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Kim.
Hi.
Commissioner Layton.
Hi.
Um, seven votes against, motion in fact.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the agenda, next we have item seven C one, here's San Marco Avenue. And we're going to do this a little bit differently, uh, because. Uh, item seventy is related. And so. We're reading these, but we're going to have a presentation. Each property. Square. So, seven C one percent. Request for a new permit to allow new residents on an infill lot pursuant to section twelve, one two hundred, zero, two, zero, B. San Bruno Municipal Code. And for architectural review permit pursuant to. Uh, San Bruno Municipal Code, section twelve, one two hundred, seven, zero. And Amara, the. Spiritus Caconitis, the owner, and use permit twenty-three dash zero, two. And AR twenty-three to record the environmental termination, for them pursuant to three, section fifteen, three, oh. A instruction of limited number of new smaller, including a three-story school. Residents. In an urbanized area. Uh, for item seven, the one ten San Marcos Avenue. Exactly the same. Uh, thing. And that's our presentation for both.
Of course, thank you, um, good evening, Commissioner, my name is Paul, something the proposal for one ten and one hundred. This is a request for two, um, each purpose to allow construction of two D homes. Both of three thousand two hundred eight square feet, each on a vacant lot. All including junior accessory dwelling units or J U's. Part of the car use because there are new developments on infill lots pursuant to S D M T section twelve, two hundred, zero, forty. Pursuant to section twelve, two hundred, zero, seventy, this project require. Airtime permits as well, to require you to notice. Um, something else to note as well, as, as you mentioned, yes, um, presenting only these one presentation. Uh, but at the end, you'll have to give one decision for each, I mentioned that again, um, at the end as well. So a bit about the location of these projects. Um, it's on San Marco Avenue between San Luis Avenue and San David Megan Avenue. The lot size for each lot is roughly five thousand three hundred sixty per feet. Here's a picture of the, the same conditions, four lots of bacon. Has some gravel, grass, dirt, and, and he shows. There are a few more pictures of the existence of it. There's one of the nearby properties. Across the street on the top and. We like no baby. There's none of the other surrounding property. I need to mention here as well that it's somewhat, it's somewhat of an eclectic neighborhood, it was sort of a combination of. A mix of unit combinations. Commercial properties nearby as well. The code project. Is, um, same for both lots, just a mirror image. It's two, it's a two new, two. Uh, new two-story dwellings of three thousand, three thousand feet. Uh, each includes a five hundred square foot J U. A note about J U for area allowance. Um, first state and local, uh, ordinance, J U's are not included in both where area and they are. So they're subtracted from those. As we see, um, progressive. What area and, um. That they are, I want you to check the J U from the area ratio, it comes out to point five four one. And your square area comes out to two thousand and eight square feet. Here's a site plan for the projects. We highlighted areas far where the second story will be. Brucey landscape plan. But. And we've noted, who's life giving a front setback? Which is between our, um. Department. Your four plans. Um, for one ten San Marco. I know that is the second story off to the left there. And it's the same. Size as the other property as well. Here are the obligations for one ten San Marco. I'll notice the. Dark gray asphalt change in the group. And white grid, we're all signing. And there are no secondary windows. On the outside of these projects, so one ten San Marco. The left side does have secondary windows. After one hundred San Marco, that's the right side. Received elevation one hundred San Marco. So our findings. That the composite forms the. Gold tall standards is only for a general plan. It. It agrees with territory, the neighborhood, will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare, increase the attractive building environment. Our recommendation is to approve proposed residences. AR two three that here's a one, P two three that here's a one. And one hundred San Marco. And the, and those residents had, uh, one hundred San Marco, there are two three that here's a two, P two three that here's a. And as a part of the presentation, I'm happy to take any questions, and I believe County Bar is also on Zoom available as well. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Comments from.
Oh. This'll, this'll be a question, yeah, I'm interested to know why they're building single family homes and, uh, two plenty in the R two zone.
Is the output here?
Uh, I was, I think I would, they would be on Zoom. Or, uh, uh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm available. Can I bear out here, available to answer the question?
Yes, uh, go ahead.
If I can, uh, repeat the question, I, I, I heard duplex. Uh, but wasn't really sure how the question was asked.
Yeah. Is, why is it a proposal for? Single family? And not duplexes? Or, or even more potentially that? In the R two zone. But you could get higher density. And you chose to do that.
Well, the, the property owner decide, uh, requested to do a single family dwelling with a, uh, junior ADU. Uh. Which. Is less, less density on the property, a duplex on that property would be, uh. Uh, a lot more extensive, uh, prob- quite possibly a full two-story building with, uh, with. The, with four parking spaces and, uh, you know, and, and, uh, four, four-car garage.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from the commission? Again, um. So, uh, does the architect, uh, I know you just spoke, you wish to add anything, uh? Oh, sorry.
See.
He's just.
I need to get me myself very clear.
No problem.
Mr. Bureau, just wanted to check. I want to be like a logic. Just a point of question on my part, my part is. Zero, zero, we're on, we have two single devices having. One double.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, the, the audio is terrible on Zoom, so I'm, I'm, I didn't catch much of what was asked by the commissioner.
I'll give it another try and send it back. There's an echo, so. So my question was. The direction was in Congress, having this one single. Having single the lots versus having one double garage.
I. I, I didn't, I didn't catch any of that.
You know. I mean. It's not that wrong.
Could it be impossible to type that question into the chat, because I think I know the. It's, it's talking about. The width of the garage.
Two garages, two garage doors, but just one, and I don't. But just ask the question, and it sounds like, uh, to be sure.
Not sure what's going on. That's a, that's a. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a sixteen-foot wide garage. And you're on, should they be two, eight or first?
I was interested to educate myself. I was interested to educate myself. They're good, they're improved on to have the two single garages versus having a double. And I'm perfectly fine with the answer that.
Okay.
Okay, I. If I could, I get it. Um I did get someone uh that's uh texted me the the question. Uh it it's a matter of preference. Uh the, the requirement is uh is is in compliance as far as the size of the garage. And uh it's, it's just a matter of preference of the, of the owner to have two separate garage doors or one, uh one single sixteen-foot garage door.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Um hi, I was, uh, everything on here looks pretty great. My one question for you is on second story. Uh looks like it's mostly a hip room with the exception of one gable in the back. And from the front and the back of the straight, from the side, I think it was a little funny. And uh I'm curious if there's a reason for that gable and why it may not be a hip.
Uh no, no real particular reason why uh why we didn't do a hip. But uh. If that's, if if that's the consensus, uh the the wood design will be easily changed.
Personally, I, I think it would be um. I think it would look better with a, with a table. Uh but I, I'd be curious to know my fellow commissioners.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree, given that that wall has no windows and all, the upper floor and all, I think so. It's kind of uh. So. Who would recommend you change?
I'd recommend that.
Where are you going to figure?
Uh if I could, if I could through the chair, just that hips. Hip, hips tend to be uh less imposing. So not looking at the drawing right now, uh if, if it's, if. If you're preferring a gable over a hip. Uh just, uh just consider uh from both views. Uh from the front and the back on how that might look, uh you know, by having that added height for a gable.
I, I think we're. Yes, it's a gable. Very fortunate, uh stolen. If you can hear me.
Maybe staff can clarify.
I'm sorry, uh repeat.
Yeah, so you can hear him speak up, so sorry for coming in just loud. Um. We're seeing the opposite, that hips should be introduced on the rear upper story elevation. It currently shows the gable.
Understood, understood, yeah, not a problem. I just didn't want it to conflict with the uh, the porch gable in the front of the house, or, 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 or being uh. Uh added height, say on the side or something. Yeah, I I didn't catch, I didn't catch the fact that it was on the rear, yeah, so that's, that's. That's understood, not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh I'm announcing it in the hand raise in the commission, uh so then architect, uh Mr. Barn, did you want to speak at all? Uh just your thoughts on on the design at all, uh for your questions?
Uh only, only that uh, uh working in this town for. For almost forty years, I didn't realize that there was uh two vacant lots, and I was pleasantly surprised that uh. Uh we could do something like this and, and comply. Uh and then with the uh, with the added, uh the added uh. Uh uh ability to add a additional housing units as far as a junior ADU in the back. Uh I, I believe this could be a good project for, for that area. And I thank staff for uh, uh for the review and uh all the conditions are uh are agreeable.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think at this time we will open this item up for public comments, uh you're in the ring or in Zoom or so, you have any?
Dan. Is that kind of speaker?
Hi, thank you for the time. My parents own the property right next door to. They, and I can, I knew that that property was vacant for fifty years. And and it's good to see it being developed, so pleased uh with the overall design of the property and, and uh. And we're, we're, we're excited to have that property, empty lot being built on. Just a couple of questions. One, uh. Relating to uh hardscape on the east side of one ten San Marco. Why hardscape, but why not a combination of hardscape and maybe some greenscape? So that's increased can be planted right on the fence line, you know, maybe tree trees or stuff. That, just to give some greenery rather than, you know, we have a driveway and then there's the fence and then your, your property. Uh so that was one question I had. Second question, uh relating to the second story of one ten. On the east side. Whether there was any incremental setbacks that were considered at the time of the design, more from an architectural standpoint. And a sunlight standpoint. And then my final question is, during the grading process, I think there will be some grading on the lot, whether. Uh just to keep dust down for the uh, for the, for the neighbor, if that can be wet. Uh and the dirt can be wet so that uh there are small kids that are running around on the on the policy next door and. Please, you know, one, but so those, those are my three questions, thank you.
Anything for speaking? Um I don't think this commission answered any of those questions. I think your comments have been noted, uh empty architect for the, the outfit that they're here is.
I, I would just like to comment that uh that would be up to the uh, we, we have proposed a. A uh preliminary landscape plan uh that will provide some, some landscaping on that uh, that narrow area on the east side. And if the homeowner uh would like, uh the property owner would like to uh add something that would add some height. That'd be fine, although there is no. Um. There are no windows on that side, uh I believe. And the fact that uh we do have a full five-foot setback on that side. As far as setback. Uh the second story is in the middle of a, a large project, and uh so it's set back from the front. Uh and so uh we've. Taken the liberty to have the second story five-foot setback uh and, and, and uh. In the effort to uh have setbacks in the front and the rear. So I. That's, that's the design that uh that we wanted to do and uh except for the uh architectural review and planning commission to decide. As far as construction and dust and everything, yes, there are uh fairly strict guidelines uh for during construction and uh. Uh for dust and uh, and runoff uh uh compliance, and so there'll, there'll be uh. You know, protection uh to adjacent, adjacent properties during construction.
And thank you. Uh any additional speakers?
One hand raised. Nick, I'm giving permission to speak, you will have three minutes whenever you are ready.
Thank you. Um this is just a general comment for the planning commission. Um I really feel that we need to stop approving single-family homes. Um there's a kind of a negative narrative. Around increasing the density of San Bruno. Uh we're in a great location, we have Caltrain, Bart. And Samtrans and also ride sharing, so a, a lot of things that come around with adding more dense housing is parking. So that shouldn't be a problem of sto- stopping more dancing housing. Um San Bruno, according to the US Department of Housing and Development. Our residents here are nearly fifty percent of us are, is under um. The area median income to meet a low income. So if we added more dancing housing, then we'd have more affordable housing. We really need to stop with the single hu- housing stuff. There, there's more needs uh to our community. Rather than having a four-car garage and a bigger house. So please, I would really can uh ask the commission to uh move away from single-family homes. Though I am glad that we are getting more housing in the area, but we need to provide more for other community members.
Great, thank you. Uh. There's just a statement, uh we have another speaker.
I know.
Uh this gentleman has his hand raised.
You want to have?
I did, yeah, you just introduce yourself. Uh my name is uh Costa Capone, I will be the uh. The builder on this one, uh my father is the applicant, so I want to be. And uh I wanted to address a few issues. First of all, there was a question on duplex. Uh for a while, we were under the um implication that we had had a minimum square footage of a duplex. Uh for the lot, and I believe this is uh less than six thousand square feet, so. We had issues there. Um. Secondly, with the parking, uh for every unit, we have to have two cover uh parking, so. Having a duplex would have that for, which really doesn't help when designing a building on such a small, small lot. Uh you would go two stories up and a lot deeper, um impacting the other neighbors, sunlight and the whole nine yards. Uh thirdly, with the um. With the single-family homes, we understand that San Bruno does have a problem and we, we need more density uh. We need more uh density residential units, but. With uh smaller lots and with the uh what we're allowed to build. On the smaller lots and with the impact of the community, it really doesn't help. We could have combined these two lots or. The third lot up top uh and built eleven units. But it, does it really help the community in the way that it looks? I think having all these high-rises, having everything else is just. It, it really is destroying the community, so we're trying to build something that. That fits in, also putting in more density with the uh junior ADU unit. And that's, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Any other speakers on the Zoom or in the room?
There are no.
Okay, uh.
We're, we're returning for discussion.
Yeah, I was just gonna close the comments uh. Yeah, okay, close a couple, okay, alright. Comments and questions for, from the mission?
I uh, I don't have a problem with what you would build, your property. Um. I would challenge the idea that it would destroy the community if you didn't, if you wanted to. You know, pursue what, you know, if you saw it as a profit-maximizing choice to. Parts is built in eleven, well, in a building, I mean, there's similar thing across the street. I don't think the community would destroy it by having that building there. I think it's a very nice neighborhood. So. I, I just like, I would, you know, like, I, I, I think people, you know, what you could do with the land and. You either live it or to sell it, but it's your land. But I definitely, I would say like. I mean, honestly, under the city's subject builder's remedy, you could do, I have a lot more than I really wanted to. Um so, you know, uh you, I don't, I don't have a problem with what you want to do with it. Um it's a very nice project, um and you kind of agree with Mr. Rackerill, that the. It's a very good location for density with walking distance to, to Caltrain and a short bike ride to Bard and. You know, so something to think about. Definitely. I feel like it did there. The idea of then putting a park. Directly adjacent to El Camino Real in a transit zone would be destroying the community, it doesn't really stand up as good.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Any other uh, which, which could?
That um. I like to, I, I back here, um, sorry, your name is hard for now, but. Go the uh, so he said he, he was, um he would have needed a variance to get duplex because the lot size is five thousand, not big thousand, is that correct?
Okay, so um the current, the current R two zoning has, is twenty-nine hundred square feet. For unit, so. Lots are only uh below five thousand. However, there are other um. Other ways under SB nine and uh just with the ADU ordinance that more units could have been. Proposed on the lots, uh for example, you could have had a single-family home. With a accessory dwelling and a junior accessory dwelling, so essentially um. You know, three units on each lot or without any additional required, so there were options. Uh there are, there, there certainly are options. Would have been additional options available. Um just using primarily the state law, our surroundings, we've identified in our housing element that somebody needs to be fixed. Uh both of those to uh recognize. SB nine, which uh, you know, essentially allows for uh additional subdivision of the box and. And we, essentially for single-family lots, uh you get or have, you get one of the four units. Or even in um. Even under SB nine, you're actually not required to subdivide, so you could propose four units on each lot.
Okay, so. So strictly speaking, um a duplex would not have been possible because this lot is, is not marginal. Um however, there's other options, were those options explained to the applicant during the process?
We, yes, we have spoken to, uh we have provided options and we, and we've always encouraged higher density on the lots.
And that was communicated during?
No, in, in one way, um. Yeah, everything happened pretty quickly, we just, you know, all of a sudden received plans for what was being proposed and. Uh so I, you know, I, I know, I, I personally didn't have any communications, I'm not sure if my staff there.
Okay. And um Paul, did you happen to know that, I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sorry, but. Um were the SB nine options or the eighty was? I, I honestly, I, I would expect the architect to know this on that he's, but um was already discussed, or was this communicated?
Um I, I personally didn't, didn't communicate that, that information from the back, I guess you could do a J U and an A U as well. On a lot, I've heard that didn't communicate that. Um. But went forward, but I know that it's what the R from the campus. And what a huge one forward.
Um and also the, the comment about uh parking, is that true that on a duplex or on a spot would be needed, so?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
As, as one of the, one of the co-authors of the uh Transit uh Quarters Plan uh way back when. Uh yes, if this, if this property uh uh. Was uh, you know, complied with uh what was uh the intent of the Transit Quarter Plan for housing, yeah, we would have, we would have discussed it. I would have definitely discussed it with the property owner. But it's only two resident, basically two residential lots. It's ten thousand square feet. Doesn't kick in any uh amenities for uh for high density. Uh really, the only, the only ability to uh. To uh, to develop the single lots are for duplexes. Uh fortunately, uh you know, we've, we've been able to do a junior ADU, so you got two dwellings. And yes, there is, uh there is a property right to do a, an additional uh ADU. So if that's the will of the city, and if that's the will of the community, yes, we will eventually, could eventually have, potentially have three units on each lot. So. Uh there's nothing else that can be done without uh extensive uh. Uh approval process, which uh I have, I have to admit, the, the city doesn't really have a. Uh have a decent track record on something like that. So. Uh I think for this purposes. Uh you know, for a, for a property that's been vacant for over fifty ye- fifty years, that uh, that uh this is, uh this is a big plus.
Back to my uh, the parking? Does two, if you plan every car for one?
Yes, however, there are uh several state laws that. That the applicant uh again could have, could have invoked because of the proximity to transit. Uh to reduce the market of ADU or J U, because it requires additional parking. Okay, so I, I guess um to further, I guess to further expound on, on, on your question, Commissioner Coon. So uh I did have conversations uh with. Uh the folks that uh sold this property and their listed agent, so. Um they owned, they, they own the commercial building and these two lots. We actually emphatically recommended that they uh rezone the lots. We actually emphatically recommended that they rezone the lots, combine them and do you know, do more than they're like housing. So then we didn't hear from them for a while. And then, you know, the first thing we knew that the property decided the easiest way for them to exit was to just sell all three lots separately. So they sold the commercial lot separately and then these two lots. So, you know, obviously doing a resounding is more time intensive. But they chose not to do that, but they, they couldn't solicit a buyer.
I just wanted to ask for clarification. So basically, building, whoa, ADU lines underneath existing zoning now require four, but you can build four even six units. I was calling in a home plus an ADU plus JDU. You know, typically a duplex would be more equal sizes, the JDU and ADU will typically be smaller. The exact details of that, like I forget how big maybe you can get, but it's fairly substantial potentially. So like, yeah, the, the, you can get around the partner requirements. I think all that's accurate. Yeah, I really, I think like anybody that is convinced that, you know, developers are clearly on the max. I think as opposed to building construction to their tastes, things that will make things that they believe fit with the community. You know, we have a very clear example here. I feel fairly certain. It's getting more intensively. You know, like it's, we don't want land.
So I I really think that this, seeing two single family buildings, so close to Alcine, has not actually fit the character of this neighborhood. It, not only right now is my family, but I think it ought to be higher density. I feel very similar to you, Commissioner Harmon. Not a property, you know, I'm not gonna tell you what to do with it. But I do think that you're making a mistake, not just leaving money on the table, but you're leaving, you know, housing options on the table. Housing is good for the city, more money is good for you guys, right? I hope that you would reconsider higher density. Come back around, ask for variance, ask for whatever, but I think there's often.
I'm just gonna say, I should telegraphing that I absolutely will be in support if you didn't come back later. That was, that was comparable to a small apartment. I think this area is the best.
Okay, I will just say that I think it's your land. It is within the rules, providing it, an ADU, JDU. I have no thoughts with this project as it is. I think it's a good project. You know, always change your mind after we vote yes or not on this. So it sounds like if you didn't want to reconsider, people on commission now like to see that, but personally, I think think it was that, that's what you wanted. So if there's no other comments, does anyone like, like to make the motion this matter? We have to name two separate mentions, one for each house or property. Great, that's a motion. Then second, and I just wanted to clarify for item 7D110, San Mark about it. Which is oh, one, so. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Madden?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gerardo?
Aye.
Commissioner BSadi, for three cues. Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Coon?
Aye.
Commissioner Lathan?
Aye.
Those six guesses and one or two, motion, pass.
Thank you. Would someone like to make motion on item 7C110?
I believe in team one.
Okay.
Please look at my notion. I'm not. Another, the prime commission approved that UP 23-001, which I have reviewed next. AR 23-001.
Sorry, I think we just did 001. I love two. If you want to go all two was done. They're out of order and yeah. Agenda is.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on, commission approved that 23-002 architectural review, AR 23-002, based on finding that's one in three. But news permit, combining four dwellings, will be architecture review condition approval.
Wait a second, can we take a roll call on this?
Chair Madden?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gerardo?
Aye.
Commissioner BSadi, for three cues.
Commissioner Harmon?
Right.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Coon?
Aye.
Commissioner Missy? That's six guesses, one or two, commission pass.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item 7B, 763 through 765 Huntington Avenue. A request for a use permit to convert existing land use to a restaurant and bar versus conditionally permitted and planted. These critical problems identified at San Bruno. At 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue. PD 17-001, pursuant to ordinance number 1865. Gary Baker is applicant's architect. Daniel Fumsley, business owner, and partnership is provided this category in Z, proceed to guidelines in section 301. To be consistent, this will is, do we have a staff presentation? Yes, I just got my game. Oh, is, I'm sorry, this is, you skipped. He, I don't. I'm, he's, I'm just down. Well, the C is under, yeah, so, sorry. Yeah, so that, yes, they, the next public, seven, 637. Then qualify to see.
Hello again. How, wait, we're commissioners, the rather, that's it. Right? So for this item, this is the agenda for the presentation. The presentation first starts off with the permit request. Then you'll move on to the background where I will discuss the parcel history, followed by existing conditions. Where I will check on the location and property conditions. Followed by the proposed conditions, where I will present both business, site plan, floor plans, and elevation. Second to last will be staff analysis, where parking, alcohol licensing, security plan, and findings will discuss. Finally, the presentation will end with a staff recommendation. So the subject property is 763 and 765, I mean, Huntington Avenue, used permanent UP 22-008. Proposed business is over under the family sports bar. And this is a request for a use permit to convert the existing land use to a restaurant and bar, which is conditionally permitted in the planned development district for properties identified at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue, PD 17-001. Pursuant to the ordinance number 1865. Gary Baker, the applicant and architect, is here present with us today, as well as the business owner, Daniel Valmaquilla, and her business partners are also present with us today. And the wealth family partnership is the owner of the property. The background. Parcel history, so prior to 2018, the site was zoned as commercial zone district. But in 2018, the San Bruno City Council changed the zone to planned development district ordinance number 1865. And this was for a larger mixed use project that included both two parcels there. You can see what the previous zoning map looked like. Through APNs, and then they converted it into one single PD. But although it was included above a larger mixed use project, the site is no longer included in this mixed use development project. Instead, the application for the mixed use project will be focused at 111 San Bruno Avenue. So that means the property is available, but it's still had to comply with the PD ordinance that was passed in 2018. And according to that ordinance, stringing establishes, establishments are conditionally permitted at this property. Which is why we're here today, for client commission, to present this project. So we'll start off with the existing conditions and location. So 761 through 767 Huntington Avenue is located, as I mentioned, in the planned development district for 111 San Bruno Avenue and 761, 767 Huntington Avenue. It is situated in, on Huntington Avenue between San Bruno Avenue West and San Mateo Avenue. It is also across the street from the San Bruno Caltrain Station. The subject site is located in the Transit Quarter Plan area, so it is surrounded by a variety of zone land use zones, which include residential properties, commercial properties, and public properties as well. So this slide here shows the surrounding land uses to the subject site. In the upper left, you have a veteran center. To the upper right, you have the Caltrain Station. And then the two photos on the bottom show the existing conditions of 111 San Bruno Avenue West, which will now be the mixed use project that is currently being processed by the city. This slide also shows other surrounding land uses to the subject site. The upper left photo shows Dan Mateo Avenue going south towards the central business district. The upper right photo shows some multifamily apartment buildings behind 111 San Bruno Avenue West. And the two properties on the bottom are on Mills Avenue. We are situated directly behind the proposed sports bar. So the existing property conditions, the lot size measures 10,131 square feet and features a 4,794 square foot building that currently consists of four vacant fifth units. Formerly, the building had a commercial kitchen at unit 761, a convenience store at unit 763 and 765. And lastly, a car rental office at far right unit, which is 767. The existing parking layout for this property includes nine parking stalls. One is an ADA accessible parking stall, and the other eight are standard parking stalls. There is minimal landscaping on the current property along the side property lines and at the front property line as well. These photos here on these slides show the existing condition of the subject site. If you guys want to take a moment to see them before I move on to the next slide. So these following slides will show the proposed conditions, the proposed business, the site plan, floor plans, and elevation. So the proposed penny is over under a founder's sports bar. The proposal is to convert the existing space into a sports bar restaurant and supporting office. They'll be offering food, beverages, including alcoholic and non-alcoholic drinks. And they will also broadcast professional sports events. The project's objective is to become an integral part of San Bruno by providing excellent service, food, and welcoming atmosphere for people of all ages. The proposed business will employ 12 staff members for the restaurant and the bar. And the hours of operation will occur from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. But they could, they also propose on extending their hours of operation until 2:00 AM on selected days. And since it's a sports bar that is tailored to families, it is open to all ages. So this is the site plan for the proposed business. And it is going to convert the site into a restaurant bar and supporting office. And to recap what I stated previously, unit 761 with a commercial kitchen. That is going to be improved to include new features for the commercial kitchen. The convenience store is at 763, 765, and the office is at 767. So the updated layout is unit 761, 763, and 765 will be transformed to accommodate the restaurant, the bar, and public floor area. Unit 767 will accommodate the supporting office space for business staff. This will include a small office space and a break room for staff members. No additional structures will be constructed in this proposal, but there will be a new traction closure for kitchen waste that will be constructed in the parking lot. And the scope of work mainly includes the tenant improvement and upgrades to the parking area. So to quickly cover the project detailed summary, the gross floor area will not change. It will continue to have the nine parking stalls, one ADA acceptable stall, and eight standard stall. And now I will give you guys the breakdown of each unit. The bar restaurant will have 1,675 square feet. And it's identified in the gray box. The kitchen is going to be in unit 761. This is 888 square feet. The office space will be at unit 767, and that is 1,080 square feet. The proposed project will also have storage and new restroom. And this will house 930 square feet. There are existing utility rooms on the subject property, and this houses 221 square feet. And lastly, like I mentioned, a new traction closure is identified as purple, and that will accommodate a kitchen waste. So that is the breakdown of the site plan for the whole project. The photo to the left shows the existing floor plan of the subject property. As I mentioned, the proposed projects will largely include tenant improvement, and this is what the new proposed interior space will look like. As can be seen, there will be some adjustments to the interior space. Accommodate bar, the restaurants, greater storage place, and the supporting office. This second photo here shows the food service plan for the restaurant. You can see details of the commercial kitchen, the bar space, and the furnishing for when they are serving food. And the, I'm showing you guys today is, this is the public floor area and the furniture plan as well. So the public floor area is identified in the gray box, and that is the furnishing when the live broadcasted sports event will occur. The live broadcasted sports event will occur. Lastly, this evaluation has been seen, it will remain the same. The changes that will be made to the elevations will be a new business sign that. Will be approved by planning staff through a signed term of application. And you can see the addition of a new traction closure uh with the brick to to the left. Now moving on to staff analysis, first I will cover proposed pardon. So the P D uh district for one eleven San Bruno Avenue and seven six one thirty-five. Seven Huntington Avenue does not have a specific off-street parking requirement. And nothing is stated in the San Bruno Municipal Code regarding this P D zone. Nor does ordinance eighteen sixty-five have any pardon standards. So the parking standard that we have to adhere to is the one indicated in the transit corridor plan. And that is table seven eight seven. Right here, those land use categories that are looking over here are general retail, restaurants, and general office. And for the proposed project, we will specifically be looking at the restaurant. The supporting office space is not included in this gross floor area calculation here because it's an accessible space to the restaurant. Uh the primary land use here is the restaurant and bar, so. Our top staff did its parking calculation on two thousand five hundred sixty-three square feet. Now, if you apply the three per one thousand square feet of gross floor area minimum. And six per one thousand square feet of gross floor maximum. The parking requirement for this subject site is eight minimum parking spaces and fifteen maximum. That finds that the existing nine parking states is small within this range of the T C P parking standards. So the proposed business would maintain the existing layout, which includes the one eighty-eight acceptable parking space and the eight standard parking spaces. The proposed project will also incorporate new accessible paths for ADA uh pardon. And lastly, uh similar point, sorry, uh the proposed project will also maintain the existing power curve. And one thing to point out is there is. An additional ADA accessible parking based on, I mean, an avenue. In between the proposed subject site and the site adjacent to its left, which is the veterans' center. The second analysis that staff and updated with the alcohol licensing. The proposed business will apply for type forty-seven alcohol beverage control license for food service bar. This is often known for on-site general and eating place. This type of licensing does allow for the sale of beer, wine, distilled spirits for on and off-site consumption. This licensing also allows the admission of minors on premises. And lastly, it does allow for hours of operations to occur between six A M to two A M on day seven days a week. Now, the proposed project will adhere to the following conditions. It will operate as a general eating establishment and will maintain an adequate kitchen facility. This is one of the licensed regulations for the type forty-seven A B C lighter. The second lighter in regulation is that it shall generate substantial meals for on-site uh consumption. In terms of hours of operation, the proposed business is proposed to operate between eleven A M. To two A M, and it will operate from Wednesday through Monday and will be closed on Tuesdays. The proposed business shall also provide staff with a signed copy of the A B C lighter. It shall also require that all pardons on premises present a valid I V when ordering alcoholic beverages. And the last condition that the proposed business will adhere to is that it shall provide separate glassware for all pardons. Under the age of twenty-one to distinguish between alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages. Overall, these conditions will. Back and forth, a family-friendly environment for all ages to enjoy the proposed business and the broadcast sporting sporting events. The third thing on our staff analysis is the proposed security plan. The proposed business will have a security team member on site during business hours. And it was proposing one security member per fifty pardons. If occupancy exceeds fifty, they will hire a second security member. But the proposed business will also install video cameras inside at exits and surround the subject property. Part of the proposed security plan is to also enforce a strict rule of checking government-issue I Vs for all pardons that enter the premises. Management and staff notify local police in the case of criminal activity or violence that occurs on premises. Also included in the proposed security plan is security or management will ask any parties involved in. Fights or cases of physical disturbance to leave the premises and will notify local police departments if things escalate. And the last notable thing on the proposed security plan is that business will share a list of employees. With their information such as names, dates of birth, to the San Bruno Post Department. Proposed project will adhere to the following condition. All entertainment activities shall be contained within the building and shall not extend into the sidewalk and parking area. The proposed business shall conform to the noise regulations in our San Bruno Municipal Code. An occupant's sign shall be displayed to indicate the maximum number of people allowed in the building. This number will be determined by a fire marshal who will determine this number based on its obviously success of nation. The business shall maintain public safety on site through the use of security personnel, which I mentioned with one per fifty pardons. The business shall monitor pardons for any signs of impairment and will refuse service to those who are clearly impaired. The last thing is if there are pardons on premises that are clearly impaired. Business shall provide assistance or transportation to get home. So. That finds that in terms of health, safety, and general welfare, the proposed establishment has undergone review by city departments. And applied the building, fire, and police requirements as well. The security plan ensures that activities are conducted without endangering the surrounding area. And the project has been conditioned to prevent nuisances and ensure safety and welfare of residents and workers. As for property and neighborhood welfare, the proposed project involves tenant improvements and parking upgrades. There will be no adverse effects to neighboring properties since there's no proposed addition. And also the location along Huntington Avenue and across the Cow Tray Station. Does ordinarily accommodate commercial uses and they're not directly adjacent to residential property. And the last thing we find that it is consistent with the San Bruno general plan, uh the P D district. Aligns with the central business district designation. And eating and drinking establishments are listed as conditionally permitted uses. We find that proposed business will contribute to a vibrant downtown core. It will create a attractive destination for residents, workers, and visitors. And will ultimately enhance the central business district along Huntington Avenue and San Mateo Avenue. So staff recommendation is to approve use permit U P two-two dash oh oh eight. Based on findings one through three and condition of approval one through fifty-nine. And the next step I've mentioned before is if the planning commission approves the use permit. It will be subject to a ten-day period. And I'm happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned before, the architect and the business owners are also here. Present to answer any specific questions for the proposed business.
Very thank you. Just making sure I understand the history with this parcel, this had been part of the proposed mixed-use building. I understand negotiation between the different ownership of two chunks of it. Uh I was actually looking at our zoning map, and most of this slicing here is T O D one zoning. But then there were the two parcels that were two kind of chunks where the P D um. I'm a little confused about considering this like a change in land use, because I would have thought that restaurant was already. By the uses authorized in, and I'm pretty certain it is a T O D one, maybe it wasn't the plant development designation.
Yeah, so T O D one conditional um allows for bars in prison establishments, but they're condition committed.
I see, okay, sure.
This planning development district is consistent with the T O D one.
Okay, so yes, but it is still uh conditionally permitted, it's okay, um. My larger concern is just like, you know. Are we expecting this parcel to be redeveloped into something multi-story at some time in the reasonably near future, you know, five or ten years out? I don't know. That we really, I mean, if somebody invests a lot of sweat equity and and care. Uh you know, obviously, this is much nicer than an empty building, but I have no question that this is, I know. But um I do concern that if we're saying, oh, this this becomes, you know, and you have to grow part of the San Bruno community and is a popular destination. And it sits there being a one-story building, like literally like right in this intersection across the street from the cow train. That is leaving empty air above that building that we have zoned for use on use. And that doesn't seem great. You know, I mean, like, maybe they can rebuild it, and this restaurant can can come back and do it after, but it's still like, it would be very disruptive. Um if they do are established there and then people want to redo the whole parcel, so I find that pretty concerning. Thoughts or let's yeah, and to to speak to us better than. Yeah, my my one other comment was the thing about sharing the staff names, the least seems simultaneously a little more clear than like, I guess, to their background check recorder. Just, you know, if they do background checks on employees, which lots of companies do, there are services for that. That seemed to have a lot of that standard, just the bars. Screening, and I understand, you know, like, like any drug that lowers an emission and has sensitivities, I, you know, typically. Businesses do police screening, I, you know, I get it, so I don't know if it is like. Let's do that, but it is.
Yeah, then, so following up with um what commissioner and then. Uh concerned about this not getting developed in the future. Is there a means to put um like an expiration date? So now, for your five, if that is I think. That people will make people feel comfortable. I know it'd be hard to. I I do have a question, yeah, and more be understanding of the community. Uh I'd like to know why, why you chose this location, you know, what what else was there in San Mateo Avenue? And what what drew you here?
Alright, do you have a question? First, thank you for your presentation. Uh just a quick question, just so just because I apologize that it. On page seventy-three, just. And indicate that it's seven A M to ten. And then ten, yeah, seven. Watch that, it's not a deep trouble. That's construction, but not usage.
Are you referring to the ambient uh noise level?
Uh the sound level, that's correct, there's one, sure that you are not, but I need to be that is operational, so it is understood, but just. Need to correct it for that.
Yeah, through the chair, I can clarify on that condition, right? So uh that is listed in chapter six of the San Bruno Municipal Code. And that specific uh ambient noise level that is included in a staff report and who are specific to residential uses. The chapter does not specify on commercially, it's, it only goes from residential to uh construction. So that's why.
I think it's really clear, it's just that being on the other end, an application of my commercial piece. It really had to be researched and just the clarity, but you know, then we did the sound level measures, it's pretty clear that. I remember thirteen minutes sound, and I was just seeing over and cautious based upon, you know, next study, but thank you, I think you're fine.
Good, Terry. Yeah, before we get to the applicant, a question for city staff. Um, the estimated occupancy of the eating and drinking area will depend on the maximum capacity of the building. Which is yet to be determined by the fire marshal. Anything comparable that would give us an estimate of how many folks they anticipate having in there? I mean, comparable business, I know it hasn't been determined yet, but how many people can do, is there a range of folks who anticipate. Being able to serve in that space, anything comparable you can give us? Number one, uh I have other questions, but if I clear ones, if you prepare a patient or any kind of reference.
There, what was wrong, issue, yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Visit chair, I think. Uh Assembly Group A two is opposed to. Which there is no specific range on when you look up Assembly Group Two, it just states fifty pardons. But as I stated, the fire marshal wants this is submitted, or if it is submitted for a building permit. It's if this is planned approval, there will be determination during the building permit process. On what specific card it will be assigned to this location.
Thanks.
Uh I'll answer that, he's the architect, so I'll answer that. He'll be able to speak, go ahead and answer. I'll answer that, the the space at the restaurant bar has two exits. And I think it's five hundred people or maximum that you could put in for two exits. The fifty, you have, once you have fifty, you have that too. So we have lots of exits, so the fire marshal might put someone below top that, but that's the code range.
So what what are you hoping for though? I mean, given that you're gonna run a business, how many do you anticipate? But that's for.
We are giving the fire marshal to. We think he's gonna give us fifty for occupancy, but it is big space, so it might be. However, we do have entertainment in there. Table. I believe this is a double board table, so that will take up room instead of having um tables for patrons to sit on. You know, those ticker seats, which is fine by me because I would rather have less seating. So in the beginning, that way my kitchen can make sure to push out the food efficiently in a timely manner or whatnot. And then in the future, if we do decide to um of the occupancy to whatever the fire marshal has. Did I answer the question why we chose San Bruno?
Um, yeah, I'm a little unsure if we should go back to staff questions, and then you'll definitely get opportunity to respond or answer questions. But do we have any more questions for the staff of the commission?
Oh, visual.
I was just curious. This is my. Actually, I don't think this is my first time reviewing something that is a restaurant and bar. And it may be. Going by there, so. I'm I'm just curious with stuff. There are a lot of descriptions of the security protocol. Alcohol, the possibility of violence and drowsiness and. This seems. Absent that, that was not in the packet, I would be much less concerned, but with it in the packet, it is. It strikes me as unusual that there would be. So many contingencies based on disruptive behavior. And so it makes me wonder, are there specific conditions that the applicant is having to meet based on the type of. The type of business that we're proposing?
Yeah, so most of the conditions that were applied to this proposal project. Were in alignment with previous. Drinking establishments that were approved by planning permission in a path. So a couple of notable ones were Atlas. Pizza Lounge, and they apply for maybe. There is also Noel. Lounge on the corner, so you can. That is the right name. So those conditions that were. Found in those previous. That reports. Were favored towards security, and that's why the staff started to request the security plan from the applicant. That way you guys could review it for consideration, if you guys want to include. Further conditions to this project. You guys could do so as well. But there's no, for my, it was my first time reviewing one of these, so I mainly relied on those previous. Staff reports for drinking stuff.
And it may be my memory, because I I think I was here for Atlas and I and I don't recall having it be so stringent. And. So that was just surprising to me. The other question I have for staff is, are there any other? Similar businesses that. To two AM. In in this area.
Personally, I don't know any, I staff. Other staff members. Manuses, but if they have a type forty seven license, they could operate until two.
Okay, so it's a different licensing rather than.
Correct, so. The time forty seven is the P D C. Possible six AM.
Thank, I'm in the digest, I mean, later, thank you.
I think I'll remembering. It's far, it's called, they're fairly close, and I think Seamus, very close. Also that laid out.
I don't, yeah.
Any other questions for staff in the mission? No, okay, so at this time, I. Won't speak as is your architect, who tells whatever you'd like to about time in court order.
We chose San Bruno because I am. San Bruno. Living in Emeryville for ten years. And I was looking at property in Emeryville, but. San Bruno feels like home. A lot of my family and friends live in Millbrae, Burlingame, Phil's Borough. And the peninsula, basically. So I chose, we chose San Bruno. Because we saw the building was empty for lots of years. We contacted the owner. Asked if we can, you know, try to do something with it. And it just so happened to fall into place somehow. But that's why we chose San Bruno, because it's home. And we know that starting a business, we want to be close to wherever our business is, so, you know. That's number one reason why we chose San Bruno. And we didn't want to make it just a bar that served. Third food, we wanted to be a restaurant that serves, you know, beverages. We want a family. A family. Type of restaurant. If. If the kids get out of baseball and there's a Giants game, we want the family to come eat some good food, watch the game, you know. We want. We want to really be a family restaurant. That's how we perceive ourselves. We don't want to be looked at as a bar that stays open until two AM. That's why we will stay open until two AM on certain days, maybe World Series, you know, special sports days. But we. Were very adamant on being a family sports bar. With great food.
Thank you. But question for you. Twelve employees. I I live close by and I know the parking is throughout there. And I understand from city staff that the parking requirement has been met and calculated, I understand that. We're looking at, and that's why I'm trying to get to the number of how many folks you all anticipate having there. Like, you know, so let me, let me get the question, though, is. Nine parking spaces, one eighty, that's eight parking spaces. Are you looking at like twelve employees? I know they're all not going to be open in the building at the same time, but twelve employees. Given the amount of folks you want to have in there, is that parking enough for that space?
All employees, including owners, are not going to be allowed parking a lot. We will leave the parking spaces open for patrons only.
And so eliminating that, given. Is that space enough, you think, for, let's just say fifty plus? If you're in the building, playing pool and all, I'm just like right now, I live nearby, I'm inclined to approve it, I think it's a great addition to downtown. But I look at the parking and it concerns me because that area is specifically tough and tight to park in. And I just wondered, will it be enough for the things, the the pretty cool things that you're trying to offer the community?
We hope this will be enough, but. There is a lot of street parking. If the food is good, we do believe that people will circle the block as many times as they can. In order to, you know, patronize our business. I'm from San Francisco, so I know there's no parking anywhere out out there. So, you know, people have to take Uber or circle the block a few times. If our parking lot is full, then, you know, I believe. That if the food is good and the service is great, then they won't mind looking for parking.
Now, just going to turn the community perspective, how many people circling, where they're not, they're spending their time with their car on the street and not patronizing someone. That's not great, that's actually a problem. So I would hope that. Employees coming in either on public transit or. Yeah, like that's. I I'm still. My biggest concern here is just like, like, like. Obviously, this is better than just having an empty building there. But I am really concerned that you invest a lot of your heart in this and. And then, you know, okay, like. There's a lot of zones to be, all these little building, and then some place, the city for, is open that the. You know, this is originally going to be developed, I forget if the, the board is already formed, the the design. That this will likely be integrated with the last report. So that I really just like, I don't know, like. Whether you can foresee business surviving and the thing needs to be shut down for four months to tear it down, build. There are cases where a business can. Kind of bridge things back into the space and it is in some ways. Good for planning a mixed use building to already know who your ground floor tenant is or to do the commercial space. But it is, it is tough. I do somewhat question. Whether we want somebody to be a distinct space at all, or better to try to say, let's look like, get it. Get it rebuilt, just boarding for the.
Thank you for the joke. In fact, time, it's just an idea, you have time for the other restaurants. Businesses that are not in hours for it, it's John Pico's. This is a closing at five or six o'clock in the evening. They had that opportunity, patrons are going, you're sorry. Recall this, there's another one that's a kind of one. But take a look around at other local businesses that maybe. There is a. A couple of examples, and there's several places, so just a thought that you might be able to create some connection. Some relationship for local business. Even I think, I think John Pico was even offered that like part of the spectrum then, when he had. Game gone, and there were kinds of things taking place. And he, about that, he. Thank you.
I don't have any, through the chair, I don't have any questions for the applicant, but I do have more questions for staff.
Okay, great. Let's go to public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter in the room or on Zoom?
We have no speaker card from there, no handrail.
Okay, let's close public comment and go to your question, Mr. Hall.
When I, when I read the packet, I mean, I have not been yet. Informed about the the change in the the large multifamily development. I didn't, I didn't know that the ownership sounds like is different between the two different parks. So we gave, we gave a lot of thought to that whole development that I, in my mind, had already built. So it was really surprising to me to find that. That this is on the table because I really thought that's something that might be, so surprise for me. And and obviously. Housing and taking advantage areas that are screaming for density, this is, this is a great spot. For multifamily housing. Our downtown is a great spot for business like yours, I mean. Perfect. I am also a little concerned about the location and you're not the property owner. And I would be, I'm sure, I'm sure that you're going into this with your eyes open, I would just really hate for you or your. Your money and your heart and your time into. To later be developed into something that just literally bulldozed. So I guess my question for staff is. It sounds like you're reviewing something on the adjacent lawn. And. Does staff have any sort of sense? This lot in future, based on its size and what the next door to it?
So we're currently processing the simple one eleven. December, coming in the reuse project, it's. Sixty, so they're still getting a very. Good yield on that very narrow and small property. As the request comes before you, hopefully. Later this year. The proposal will be also to rezone the property to the T O D zoning. Because the the plant development intertwines the two properties, so it has to be dissolved into what makes the most sense to actually just. Instate the T O D zoning, but just by way of history, the reason this property is. Is the way it is and also is similar to Nils Park. And also, I believe, no, I'm not sure about that, but. Anyway, what, so the transit quarter plan was adopted, I think in. Twenty nine. Twelve, it's somewhere in there, but what happened was the city never followed up with changing the zone. So the zoning did change until twenty twenty one, so the only way that projects could. Come before the planning mission and be consistent with the transit quarter. Which essentially instates the. The standards of the transit. So we have several lease kind of. Situation. This is virtually implied, so. But again, what will be coming before support section. Project with the rezoning site to transit. Of course, it could develop at any. Time in the future. The property is owned by the Welsh, the Welsh family. They have a lot of property in town and. So obviously, it would be their choice on whether they would develop it. Just as it's.
Thank you.
I guess I want to ask. I don't like using government power to coerce property owners, I'm a little libertarian, speak that way, I shouldn't. Is there property where I like, same, like. You know, ones that feel forward on this and like, I do. It is reason, is it reasonable essentially for the planning commissioner to take a position that like, look, people like to stick at this property is. Making it less likely that we achieve that city. And on that, if this like denied, this is for it, I don't know whether that. Is like, so they would be a reasonable thing within the scope of our powers to discuss.
I I do, you you have. This is, this is a use permit, so you have. Discretion on on use permit, but I do want to remind the commission that if. If a retail type use, if it wanted to be an convenience store. That those are permitted uses under the plan development, and so those are not covered for you, they would just be able to come in with a building permit and business license, so. So those are, you know, so the only reason again that we're here tonight is because it is a. A very neat establishment, which is a use permit, so that's.
Limited leverage to try to get the property owner to come back to the table to go forward with the merger of the law. And the the land development gets seriously considered.
Through the chair. So. Commissioner, there are ways, when you do it, a little bit heavy handed. We, you can put moratoriums.
City council action, right?
Right, I I would just like to. Have that on the agenda for future meetings. Yeah, do that. I do share your concern. Very torn on one hand. I love these guys coming, I think we need more sports bars, I'd like to see more and more of them. Let the athlete, it's it's a thing that the artists, the Welsh fans could. Now, get it together. So too bad there, but. You know, I want the board flowers down there. I have something, if we're appropriate, put some expiration on the initial use permit. Is that an option? And if it is, could I?
If it is an option. Generally, use permits to run with all the other personal exploration, however, they can. There can be a. Like, miss it, recall. Since the approved, the public grid. As if you start use permit. Or it was the P D D permit, but they want to use permit at Tampa for a period for here, so. Staff would not recommend it in less than five years. You know, the investment of the property. So. Yeah, so you could, you could do it, but. We would recommend that, not less than five years.
What could be said? Make a motion now or? What, what's the problem?
Well, you can do that when you're actually, you know. Uh, integrating that to take, to make a motion and to.
I always say, I have been on receiving that. Seven years for, that was a number. Business. If they made it to seven years, they would be really humming. And. It would then be able to prove to. And, uh, it would then be able to prove to, um, the city, for example, that, that they deserve the state. And or if there's a temporary shutdown, they, they would make it through like very difficult. If we're gonna be in agreement with that, there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. This will be silent. I completely sympathize with Commissioner Harmon's position there. Although, you know. These people are, I think, when we see their face, they're like, all right, well, we can't pose upon them. Any kind of expectations of them developing that property. I mean, it's completely up to the Welsh chain. Obviously, they've determined that they're gonna lease that property for X amount of time. So I mean, we're really gonna spin our wheels for nothing because they've already determined what they're gonna do with that property for the next. X number of years. So. I, I do appreciate what your, your point is. Actually, I want to.
So. Kind of going a reverse order, I think. You know, they are attempting to lease it out. If they're unable to make this lease, it's, we don't know that they have people beating down their doors. And though it is hypothetically, at least it is some pressure, or it's coming back to the table to, to whatever. But I mean, but it does sound like it is limited leverage there. And like, I'm not a fan of government using its dollars that way. That's so. But I should, so, um, I, I have been, uh, when Commissioner Conroy presented time, I've been wondering, it seemed like. You know, in it. And there's that established business there. Like, it seems all well that we would accept it at that point. But I do, I did find it interesting, the point that if you do it for. Five, six years, you're coming to the end of that. Like, then the business would be much more like, it'd be established enough that if it goes through a four, I think it'll have the brand name and be able to back it, get back it, uh, at, at that, I, I. Okay. Up to give the, yeah, building. Um. So I, I think I am in line to support the proposal there.
Chair. I think that. We have a family restaurant and. There is so many people like the restaurants. And five, six years is not enough time. Might have a really tremendous season, but it's a season. And then there are the dry season. And it takes you many, many years. Ten years. More years to be able to. And if they found, there is a lease agreement between an owner, property owner, and a potential tenant. And you don't believe that three are doing to. It's their business, right? And we have before us to make a decision on this. And, um. My biggest concern being a business owner in San Bruno and now being property owner and your tenant. I can put them on the business in a time. And, um. It's a, it's a relationship that gets built and is private relationship. Responsibility. So, uh, the thought that there are continuing to. I can go back now. Which was knowing. And that's, that's. That's the responsibility of tenants, potential tenant. And. As a problem. So. We were stepping into a position of trying to figure out when it was going to be healthy and good. And I don't think that for myself as a commissioner, it's not my responsibility to do that. And walking that path, I know.
Thank you. Uh, I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Johnson, um. Having, uh, I own a business, I lease, uh, space or a little more. This, uh, and I'm sure you guys know this, just protect yourself the best you can. That between you. Uh, I'm not in favor of any. Uh, time invitations or five year, yeah, this restaurant business is tough enough.
I'm down on one of the partners and all this. I really appreciate your input.
Yeah, the audience is kind of tough tonight, so it's.
Got a lot of things, what, you know, really concerning thing about, you know, if we sign lease, you know, and say in five years, we're kind of bullied into. Leaving. I mean, we're gonna sink in, we're gonna basically lose everything or even, even if we were successful, we wouldn't break even at that point in five years. So they're basically looking out for us. And that's something we do need to discuss. Um, and thank you very much for that because that was never discussed. We didn't even know that was part of the equation about the, uh, adjacent property. I didn't know. Um, that it was going to be somewhat of a project or how far along that's gotten. And I don't think any business can, can survive with four months of being at commission because of whatever, um. You know, hazards may present itself while they're doing the construction. So, yeah, I just thank you for that. Just that, uh. Can you make us a break there? So.
And through the chair. Or you can comment on your, your thought there. It's, um. You can't just pick up and move someplace else. There's no such thing as something as simple. It takes years, years and properly. It's really difficult to do that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I guess the good news is you may have forty six families moving next door to you.
That sounds.
Yeah, it's always there. But yeah. Just go in to your lease with, uh, maybe some provision in case they try and sell. Compensated, it's not gonna be four months. It's two years probably, where, before it can move back in or have like first right to reoccupy if there's. There's things. I wish you the best.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So, you know, and please don't take this wrong, but. This business is not the economic driver that our city needs. They are sitting on some of the most valuable real estate, not just in San Bruno, but on this well. Right, right next to the Caltrain, right next, you know, close to the bar. Um, this property really needs to be incentivized, the owner needs to be incentivized to develop. And, um, you know, either we're gonna get, get them to carrot or give them this, this pick in the future. I think that needs to come across clearly. I, I agree. You should, you should not penalize. The, the business and I, I would actually feel very bad if they didn't get approved after having spent money on, on architecture. And, you know, if, if this doesn't go through, then it's gonna sit vacant for longer, right? But there will come a time in the future, and I hope that, um, as we come out of the next cycle. Um, assuming we're coming into recession. You know, finance is slowing down. Now we're talking, you know, real estate development. Coming out of the next cycle, I would really like, uh, for Sandberg to be in a position. To, um, incentivize that kind of growth that we want. I'm talking about, you know, real economic drivers. Um, we need businesses like theirs. When, when we do come out of that cycle. Uh, on the contrary, we also need, uh, the land to develop and, and to, to drive that. So, um. Yeah. I just want to, to say on your account about having forty six families next door. Um, how many of you, when in younger days, lived in. Taller buildings where you had a cafe at the bottom. Uh, I definitely spent a fair bit of time living that way in my, my college years and early twenties and I ate in whatever cafe, if there was a good restaurant. So in terms of having our downtown function, we have a lot of vacancies. We have. Maybe, you know, smoke shops, you know, like there, people are angling, animals, like whatever, but like they're not necessarily like what I think all of us would like to see in the long run for our downtown. Um, having more of this, these style of multi-use, uh, mixed-use building where you know, people live upstairs and be comfortable for regulars. It's hugely, it's hugely having. Restaurants and, and, yeah, and I, I, there was like our family sports bar in the town where I grew up where. Go there. You know, as teenagers to watch games that are after people's games. So like I, I definitely, I agree, I'd love to have something like this. If I could, I think it will be a healthier business. Yeah, thank. So it is like I'm, I'm, I'm really torn where I'm laying on the bubble of, should we simply approve this to try to pressure for it to be developed rather? Yeah, lock in. Oh, terror. And it's like I, you know, once they're there, if they aren't there and successful, I really don't see the, this place to get. It's, it's really, it's a very difficult question. What?
Your chair. Let's finish these. Thank you. Once again, we're talking about a tenant. And we're not really. We don't have any, any. Where to go. It's like forcing a landlord. I mean, we can't make them do something to your ends. We can't force these folks to do or landlords. So. And you know. That's a limited site. If you were to try to housing or start looking even part of it, it would take a thousand years to have your. So I mean, I, I think we really need to look at products, right? I think it's, I, I, I sympathize with your position. I talked to you again. Maybe I appreciate what you brought up about living next door to the restaurant. I think if you're talking about bringing in foot traffic and wider lifestyles to downtown, I think. Having a restaurant next to that, you know, the situation that you just described.
I have a question for staff. So we were trying. Essentially approved. There's that direction. And if we deny it. If I was to die, I was thinking about myself. If I was to deny this based upon the tenant and the landlord, it's. Not before us. It's not an area that I, that is appropriate, meaning a decision. Between a private agreement. And so before the commission, it really was here. Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, again, really agree with Bishop Johnson and you. So. This advocate should not be punished for to set some kind of precedent to. Encourage development. Got a lot of, uh. Plans for development that seem to be happening, uh, to scale the home. Um, I don't think we should single out this property. This is not, and they're. Trying to, uh, accelerate any of that stuff. I agree with you guys totally. It's better if it's fine, the retail and bumpy story family again. Uh, obviously, but I don't think that's before us. I don't think we can. Maybe this group here go through extra hurdles or delays or what. So that's kind of that.
Okay.
Sure.
I, I already mentioned, like, I really been excited to see this be a situation where it's multi-use, but there could be. Um, businesses just like yours in the ground floor and housing of a, of this, we need to have so bad. But I absolutely don't feel. Like this is the, the instance to try to strong arm property owner. I just, I don't believe it's our place. I can't read their mind. I don't, their intentions are. I don't know the future of this lot is gonna be, but I, I just want you to know that. You have a wonderful business plan and we want to see it. I, I want to see you in your city, um. Say if I review, I might consider the patient. You dumped already so much care into this location, um. I don't know. I was gonna throw it out there, but I don't personally feel like. I'm in the, I, I don't feel like trying to strong arm property owner into trying to. Conform to the policies. That we will, that we want to stop. Um, I'm trying to approve it with the understanding that. Just so I think maybe you should try to find another spot. Think, think about that. This could, this could really get the Welsh family owns a lot of property. I'll see if they have anything. That's, that's just my two cents. That, that's just a me, not a commissioner. So me. Very good. Thank you.
Christian Harmon. It would be, it would be easier for me to, to go along with the, the sort of like just, yes, on it, sort of what you were describing, or it's tougher the fact that they're like, we have already reviewed a design. And approved the design. And obviously it'd be nice if the property owner was here to discuss it themselves. Um, but it seems like, given that we have not reviewed and approved an alternate design, we're just the northern part of the, the property. Like, they could just build the thing we already approved. And if, if they decide that that's the property owner for them, maybe they would. So it is, it is like. The, the reason that it's difficult is because there's a kind of this existing design on the table and I, I don't exactly what happened to break down between those parties. But. You know, it does seem like if, if you, if your property is sitting out to get not be allowed to rent out. That, that pressure to negotiate, uh, older design that we all approve. So I mean, like it is, I appreciate what you're saying. I said, I am a little uncomfortable with it myself. It's like I, I do. There is like a part of me that is just like, let people do what they want there. But, you know. From the perspective of the good community, this is like some of the most valuable land in the world. Like the Bay Area, like the Silicon Valley, we need people to be able to, we want them to work here. They need more smaller units that are affordable, that have entry level or, yeah, service workers, like. It's, uh, it's really rough. Like right now you have. You know. Todd shop programmers who are renting rundown apartments down in the, in those neighborhoods because they're displacing the service computer three hours away. It's not a, it's not a great way to live. So like, it, it does. Like I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with visiting Duncan Howard and try to start a property art at the same time. It's such a pressing issue. It, it does make it. We had a plan for this property, like it should get built. Maybe said we were gonna build it two years ago. Whatever carrots and sticks we need to make that happen, let's do it.
Yeah, just reiterate, that's, these are the applicants leasing the space. So. I'm gonna make a motion for. So.
Um, Chair.
Hi.
Vice Chair Duranda.
Hi.
Commissioner, have you signed?
Hi.
Commissioner Harmon?
Day.
Commissioner Johnson?
I.
Commissioner Kim?
Day.
Commissioner Lathan?
I.
My guess is to know the motion passed.
It's by my agenda. It's by me. But good luck with your product. And our, our name is common business. Uh, so I can. Well, so this one.
Good evening, commissioners. This item is a. Uh, general plan consistency determination for our capital improvement. Program. And I want to first thank Delia Manios, uh, from our homework department who's been sitting here patiently. All evening for this item. It shall be, uh, assisting with answering any questions you might have after my presentation. It's, uh, getting laid. We'll go ahead and started. Uh, my, my presentation will include the background of the general plan consistency requirement. Uh, discussion of the projects in the C I P. Uh, that we're making a general planning consistency determination on, uh, this evening. Um, followed by a recommendation and then any questions. So this is an annual, uh, event that, that we have typically every May. And last May, we had a similar, uh, presentation before you. So by way of background, the general plan consistency is required by section sixty five, four oh one. And the purpose is to make sure that the proposed, uh, improvements, simple improvements. Uh, that are focused by the city are consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan. So, uh, it's statewide requirement and it's. Uh, you know, again, it just makes sure that the improvements that cities want to make are consistent with their plans. So the capital improvement program has lots of, uh, different, uh, types of components, uh, sewer water. And streams and so forth. It can also, can capital improvement programs can also, um, you know, investments for fire, police and so forth, doing have those types of. Items this year. They happened in previous. They happen in previous CIPs. Sewer, storm waters, city net, parks, facility, streets and technicality. So first, for sewer. The two, the two items that are in the capital improvement programs. It's a main ticket to the sewer, a master plan. So what's in need of an update? The next item is the Shelter Peak Lane Sewer Main Place Project. Also the main that's close to Shelter Peak Lane and sneak new, or it's there's concern about its condition and in the So within our general plan, we have a public facilities element. Public facilities and services element. And there are two policies related to wastewater collection and treatment systems that they be adequate and serve present and anticipated needs. They're safe and environmentally sound. And then we should upgrade and replace sewer lines to accommodate anticipated flows, prevent overflow flows and upgrade sewer lift stations underneath it. So the proposed projects are consistent with these two policies. Next for stormwater. We have a similar type of exercise of stormwater condition assessment. Again, to help prioritize stormwater improvements. We also, the city, as, as you well know, experienced a number of failures and issues during the storm events of this past year. And so one of those is a Claremont Valley gutter installation. Also, Paris and Crestmont Canyon. And then the watershed, storm drain trunk repair that fails during the storm events. So for these, we have in our health and safety element. The policies relate to protecting, protecting sites subject to flooding hazards by implementing storm drain improvements and part of building design and engineering that meets exceeds flood risk requirements. And then second, with cooperation of the flood control district, which is now one shoreline. Continue maintenance, early warning and cleanup activities for storm drains throughout San Bruno. And upgrade or replace storm drains to ensure that the city's wastewater collection and treatments systems are adequate to serve the present and anticipated. For street. We have, these are ongoing programs, street reconstructions and street rehabilitation projects. And these, and also sidewalk repair. These occur as funds are available from various sources. This again is ongoing work, so depending on the resource, that depends what projects can get funded in any given year. So for these, street policies, we have you know, policies related to improving non-motorized transportation systems. Develop safe, convenient, continuous network of sidewalks. And implement street lighting and sidewalk maintenance programs for residential neighborhoods throughout the city and underground utilities where it's fall. Plan implementation. So this section is just dedicated to projects that are that implement some of our many plans that have been done in the past. So there's projects related to the San Bruno Transit Quarters Plan, which is pavement, resurfacing, sidewalks widening and landscaping on San Bruno Avenue between Seventh Avenue and El Camino. To be nice uplifts to our, one of the gateways into the city. Second Elm and London bicycle boulevards. This is currently being explored as a part of our bike and pedestrian plan. Trager traffic signal installation. This would be along San Bruno Avenue. And where it intersects with Trager. Bicycle pedestrian improvements in Bay Hill Drive and El Camino. As this is part of the Bay Hill specific plan. And safer routes to school, the the city has been awarded safer routes to school funding. And so that has allowed us to do several improvements that are high priority street improvement projects that will improve state pedestrian and bicycle safety. And then finally signage replacement projects. These are signs that need to be replaced due to changes in regulations that require higher visibility signs. And so that's a requirement that is ongoing as well. So the, the, these projects are all consistent with transportation elements. Policies to provide efficient, safe and pleasant movement for all transmode vehicles, bicycles, transit pedestrians. And then focusing on San Bruno's efforts on improvements to the non-motorized transportation system, bicycles that are doing strollers, et cetera. Just transporters and station and their connections to the systems. Also that we develop and maintain a comprehensive bicycle network within San Bruno. Providing connections to bar and rail trains surrounding cities and plumbing and shopping areas and natural areas. And finally, to develop a safe, convenient, continuous network of sidewalks and pedestrian paths. The city. Next for technology. Well, one of the, one of the improvements that's happening here is the, at the senior center and we will be getting new eighty-six inch screen, so that it won't be quite as straight, much as straight for eyes. The, our IT department is really working very hard and their public works as well on these types of improvements. And also CCTV upgrades to the cameras that improve safety as well. So there's no specific general plan policies related to technology upgrades, but we can consider them general or consistent with the general fundings as they are. So these increasing the access to public meetings. And our improving safety campus, public facilities. CCTV cam. So that concludes my presentation. So staff is recommending adoption of resolution twenty-three oh seven confirming view of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight five-year capital improvement program this year. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four capital improvement budget. And it's in accordance with the San Bruno general plan pursuant to the government code six five four oh one. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can, if I'm available. There are any specific public work assignments.
There's a fairly significant ongoing improvements in our sewer lines through the east side. Like I, that got pretty significantly delayed by the COVID discussions and I the last I heard was it seemed like it was still kind of budget just behind schedule. Curious of whether that, like, whether that program is continuing.
Hey, Ms. I'm Diana O'Isaac, acting principal civil engineer with the Department of Public Court. So to answer your question, yes, there are. We currently have a water and sewer replacement project in construction. And that's the Avenue's three dash one project. We currently have another project and it's the Avenue's two dash one, two dash two project, which replaces primarily sewer and a little bit of the water of just two hundred fifty linear feet of water line. That's currently in design. And the idea is once the construction on the three dash one project is complete, then we'll move forward with procuring a contractor to move forward with the, the the future project. And this is, you know, we do this so that we can reduce the impact to the public. We can, we're, we're, the plan is to replace all of the sewer and water line in that area. So, so there's movement and staff is currently working on design. And we'll soon move forward with construction in the future. It's ongoing.
That has the budgeting for that. I know a lot of materials costs have been inflated and I don't know if that's back to how, but if it's going to require a budget allocation.
It's hard to say. There's a number of materials that have been delayed due to a number of things, COVID-related manpower. But in terms of costs, it's really difficult to say for the current project, the current three one avenue project. There's been some delays, but I don't believe there is a significant non-cost that resulted in those things.
Could be another civil engineer. So do we need to vote on anything to approve this? Yes.
Yes. Go home. Yeah. Much, I will be rude that we approved the resolution. I'll second.
Chair Mennen.
Hi.
Vice Chair Duranda.
Hi.
Commissioner Yu Sany.
Hi.
Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Lathan. There's some votes there.
Thank you. Next, I have nine as your staff. Volunteers for heresy. All of his team.
Volunteers. I'll just with their last serve on three consecutively and y'all need to step on.
Through the chair, I'm typically of, but this particular time, I'm living in Australia. And so I am available with hopefully, I know that will not be. But if you need a forum, keep that in mind.
I'm not available until the following Thursday. After that, I'll be volunteering simultaneously. I, I have availability. I'm sorry, sir. I think we have two volunteers. Okay, great.
That I can come to.
Okay. If you need me as an alternate, I can probably make that day work.
So far we have one item which is a big concern on that. Any comments from, well, let's hear, I was from staff. I wanted to, in addition to that. Just wanted to introduce Brenda Laura. She's our view. One of our new assistants in the planning department. She's done a great job of running tonight. So we say so again, thank you. So any, that's all you had from staff. Any comments from our members?
Yes, Michael. That decision on changing the architectural review did, did you come to the decision on that?
We're still waiting. So I, I, I can, I can mention this, but still waiting to come up with a decision. So as you know, because of our architecture review committee meeting dates being the Thursday before the planning permission meeting, sometimes they fall on the second Thursday of the month, sometimes on the third. Now that we've gone back to in-person meetings, we've been, there are two meetings that have been scheduled at City Hall for the third Thursday. But if, if we are willing to move to our meeting to a fixed second Thursday, then we would basically be able to be over at City Hall in a much better space than the one right here. And also we feel it's more centrally located. So that's what we're working on. We're trying to get perfect a signature right now, but next month, I think next month we will have to be back here. After, but probably at the next meeting, next planning mission, we asking the question. So to just make it fixed at the second Thursday.
That just, just to be clear, I mean, it's like, okay, if you pick second Thursday, sometimes there would be a full intervening week for the planning vision, but it's like still how if you have a close, it comes architect reviewing the fact that it still falls the same.
Right. And in fact, I think that was historically why it was set up that way, but in practicality, that's not the way we operate because we can't turn things around that quickly because of the packet pulling out. I mean, noticing requirements. So the architecture, if we don't know the architecture review committee decision, if they ask for a redesign, we can't send the planning permission to do the noticing. So there's always a month lag. The second Thursday actually is helpful because it does add an additional week to get ready for the planning mission if we need to do that. So. So anyway, but not, but we'll, we'll be bringing back an official question.
Seems like making it the first Thursday, right?
Any comments from staff?
Okay, next, I have ten comments from members.
Yeah, I am. Go ahead. I just wanted to say we don't always but it was a wonderful life with the big, and I really respect everybody else. But you know, yeah, that's why we talk and discuss ideas and I just appreciate everybody's time to stay here. So thank you. And I also just want to say thank you staff for the new setup. It's a big improvement. Thank you for doing that. And hope to see the big monitors. Addressing so much service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. I think you are adjourned. Thank you.